Good evening. Hello, everyone. It's 5:30 and it is Monday, July the first, 2024. Call the meeting to order if we can get a roll call, please.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Hires.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you so much. Is Donna Allen Love here? There she is. You would please come forward for invocation.
Father God, you've said in your word that there is no authority but that which is given by you. And so, Father, as we wield that authority that you've given us, let us do it, ever mindful that we're made in your image. And you are a good, kind, loving, merciful, and selfless God. That you, Lord, are all-powerful, and your law is all-powerful, and we are subject to it. And so, Father, I ask and believe that those of us that wield your power in your name will do it at your will, that we'll seek your will and not our own. Because every decision we make affects other people and their lives. And we all want to do that for the betterment of their lives and never the detriment. And, Father, we trust that you'll give us this will and this ability in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join us on the pledge. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to welcome BJ Baker here tonight. BJ is tag teaming for a normal city council member who has recently become a first-time father. So, we're thankful that you're here, BJ. Thank you so much.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
We'll start with public comments. Comments will be accepted from the public and individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The total of all comments from the public should not exceed fifteen minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to give a public comment?
Baker presented a whole book over there. I thought he would come.
He's just here, I think, to be supportive.
Many of you know me. I'm Jim Jolliffe. This is my sixth time I've been here. We still have a stormwater drain issue. I promise each and every one of you, you will not see me again in this chamber. I've beat my head against the wall for six meetings monthly, and it has done no good at all. So, I apologize for taking your time. But we still have a problem out there. A stormwater drain system was put in some odd twenty years ago. And to my knowledge, it's never been repaired or worked on. Stormwater drains have to be maintained. They're not functional. And we're getting hot enough now that mosquitoes are an issue. Thankfully, right now, it's dry. We need rain, and I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sure. But I've asked several of my neighbors to come in. They've asked me about how's it going at city council meetings. I said, I've been to every one of them. Nothing's been done yet. They had a guy come out and with a crew of people and cleaned up some timber that rigs tree service left. But the stormwater drain has not been affected. There's a pool there between me and the hotel that was put in originally to collect water. They put in a drain there for it to drain down into a ditch. And then the ditch is supposed to empty into the lake down at Willis Road. And it works if it was repaired. Nothing's been done. So, I promise each and every one of you, I love you to death, but this is my last time I'll be here. It's a waste of my time to come in here. You're not allowed to discuss these issues. That's unfortunate. You need to change your rules. There's some discussion that needs to be had. And you're not allowed to address me. I know that. But I only get three minutes to address you. But my only recourse now is with Talacaw Daily Press. I'm gonna try to get them to come out and take pictures of it. I'm gonna name each and every one of you as the people that come out and looked at it and didn't do anything. And I'm sure you do a good service to the city of Talacaw, but it's not got anything to do with stormwater drain. So, you guys, I'll love you. I want things to happen, but I'm not sure it will. I think I've beaten my head against that wall. And I was a U.S. Marshal here for a number of years. I've twenty-two years in the Navy. And I'm just not used to this. So.
Thank you so much.
You guys have a very nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Item number four, Consent Agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session.
I think I'll start with, let's pull B as in boy. We'll need to pull Z as in zebra. And let's go with the double A.
Anyone else?
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item five, regular session. Five A, discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. First, item B, acknowledge receipt of the May 2024 financial statement.
Marty, if you wouldn't mind, give us your opinion on as the city treasurer or the, on our financial statement.
Yeah, so after reviewing period eleven, as we come to the end of our fiscal year, May of 2024, I wanted to comment on our our carryover, our fund balance of 2.1 million, which, you know, looking at what we budgeted for the coming up year has exceeded the budget amount, which is always good. And we have one more month to go. So, we're still continuing to head in the right direction with our collections and keeping our overhead expenses within line. And this is the outcome of it, where we have a little more fund balance at the end of the year. So, what that does at the end of the year, that will help the mayor and the city administrator make the next year's budget and be able to use that money for, you know, whatever they see fit. Part of it will be fund operations, and those are more likely to be capital improvements. And so, those items are, you know, all equally important. But it will help keep this moving in the right direction.
All right.
Is there a motion for item B?
Motion approved. Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried. Consent item Z.
Z, I was needing to take into consideration.
Z is.
Hire James Hammer as a driver in the solid waste.
Stroman.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
No.
Z.
That should be Z. There's two. There's two questions.
MC and AA.
Double A. With Z, do we need to hold? State of the general. Chairman, this is the one I was giving. It's in front. So.
Check with.
Here. Yeah.
Ray's gonna go get what's posted.
Whatever, I can't pull that behind because, you know, that we didn't want to talk about stuff. It's not. So, whatever's posted out there, it's the address. Okay, so it's either you do it, it's this one, whatever the issue is, but it's not.
Yes. But I'll leave that you pull.
Maybe we can go back to.
Well, if there's a misconsolation, you know, it's not so much that I just was trying to.
We can go back to four, though, and you could pull whatever ones you. We don't vote it on, and it's a down.
Yeah. But, yeah, we didn't. I mean, this didn't really deal with itself, so it's just now.
Yeah.
Which one? Was there some? This is the posted one.
Thank you, Ray.
What is? Says, this one that I have, I know, but what's it does? ZZ and AA is being the same. Yeah. So, it's just at the end. I'm sorry. There's a kind of a mix-up and I'll let her in this. It's extra. I'll just say the posted one. Okay, thank you.
What's the main thing? Okay.
Just, yeah, push that to next month.
It's a fireworks show. Oh, okay. That doesn't need the council approval.
Good.
So, to move forward.
So, I wonder this.
Thank you.
Somebody make a motion to go back to. Item four.
I'd like to make a motion to go back to item four.
Second.
Who made the motion to approve the consent?
Consent. Who made the motion to?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody didn't vote it on, so how do we take care of that?
Somebody needs to rescind their vote.
Who made the motion to approve?
I did.
The consent agenda.
So, I need to make the motion to rescind that vote? Is that correct? Did I say that correctly?
No, I think you're fine. Because here's the deal, is this was the one posted. So, all you could possibly vote on is what's in here. And the added, the fireworks show was not, it wasn't a pool item. It was just on the consent agenda. Everything was approved. It technically can't even be voted on, so it wasn't voted on. So, we voted on everything that, I mean, the one that's in there that wasn't supposed to be, we didn't actually vote on it because it's not really on the agenda. So, you're fine where you're at. You approved everything. Yeah. Then he passed the, what he pulled, he didn't pull Z and AA.
And that's what I was wanting to pull.
Yeah, he did it correct. Yeah, he's doing.
All right. Never mind. Don't do that, correct.
I did it correct. Go figure. And that was, it wasn't my intention.
Lucky is good.
So, I need to re-read.
Yeah, I was on Z, which is basically what I was wanting. Mr. Whitmore, was there a holdoff or we need to hold off on that one, if I'm correct? There's a question?
Yeah, we'd like to pull Z to get a pension result.
Okay.
Issue.
Just no action.
No action. That's okay.
Okay, consent item double A, hire Sarah Swayze as a firefighter in the fire department.
And is she here this evening? I think I saw her.
Woo-hoo.
Mayor Council.
Mm-hmm.
Like to talk about Sarah, promoting Sarah from firefighter, firefighter driver. Sarah has been with the fire department for the past eighteen months. During this time, she's completed firefighter one, firefighter two, has been operations, rope rescue, vehicle extrication, and EMT. Sarah was also the rookie of the year in 2023. Sarah's a great asset to the fire department, and it is my recommendation to promote Sarah Swayze to firefighter driver.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold on one second. I was looking to ask Ms. Swayze a question real quick.
We haven't get to the motion in a second.
Okay. Do we need it?
Yes.
Okay.
What's their motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Ms. Swayze, can I ask you what you might? I would like to have a female's view being a woman firefighter. What's it like here in Talacaw?
Wonderful.
I mean, tell us, I mean, you know, I won't say your story, but I'd like, there's some people here that might want to hear it.
Um, well, I used to be a teacher, and then I got on as a volunteer. And the guys at the department have been really, really wonderful about answering any questions that I have, helping to train me on things that I had absolutely no clue on. So, I feel really comfortable, and I really enjoy getting to help people. So, I'm with a really good group of people at the fire department.
I do that for all the future female firefighters in the world, but. But.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Great. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item five B, discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modifications, or deny indebtedness by the trustees of the Talacaw Public Facilities Authority in waiving competitive bidding with respect thereto and approving a note purchase agreement, security agreement, and other documents as may be necessary or required. Mayor Suzanne Myers and City Treasurer Marty Hanzinger. Marty.
Yes, that is a business annual contract between us and TPWA for meeting the requirements of the ordinance for refunding of the bond. So, for that.
It's a TPFA.
TPFA.
So, move. Second.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item five C, discussion and possible action to authorize the mayor to negotiate and enter into a service-level agreement between the city of Talacaw and Cherokee County 911 for delivery of CAD services. City Administrator Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you. We're requesting no action on this. At the time the agenda was being prepared in the deadline, we thought we needed a service-level agreement between the two entities. And it turns out, we do not at this time. We may have something before you add a later date, but at this point in time, we do not need to take action.
Item six is the executive session. Have a motion.
So, move. Second.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll be back. We'll be back.
We'll be back.
Then she stinks in her fart, always.
Twenty five.
Always made it.
As seven A returned from executive session and adjourned.